But I can see better.
So I'm going to.
Something special about it.
Okay, thanks.
Anyways, in town.
So we're, we will be following my chair in just a second.
Very oftentimes.
Good.
So that's what.
Thanks, Sarah.
There's some conditions to approve.
Yeah, okay, yeah. But that's my understanding. But nowadays, like, all tenants would bounce with town staff before it comes. It's like the condition you're.
All right, why don't we go ahead and get started? Welcome to the May twenty fifth meeting of the Town of Berthoud Planning Commission. I call this meeting to order. And I'm going to guess that it's right at seven, or six, excuse me. It's right at six? Okay. For your benefit, because I've been there, done that. I'm Karen Anderson, the current Chair of the Planning Commission. I'd like to thank you for being with us tonight. Copies of tonight's agenda, do we have copies in the front? Right there with you? No? Okay. If you'd like a copy of the agenda, let us know. Please meet yourself at this point. The members of the planning commission are volunteers. Our duty is to review application materials provided. Hear public testimony, hear from the applicant, and then discuss matters before us as they comply with the land use code review procedures. I have some brief comments about the role of planning commission for the audience. Both those who are here and those watching on Zoom, do we have anyone on Zoom? Ms. Tovar, you want to, you want to on Zoom? The planning mission acts as an advisory board to the town board trustees. We'll review and make recommendations on land use issues. Within the, excuse me, within the town of Berthoud. Some decisions regarding preliminary plaques and conditional use permits, for example, before us tonight are heard by both the town board and the planning commission. Some decisions such as final plaques rest with the planning commission alone. We have staff in attendance tonight to both provide us with presentations of agenda items, answer our questions, and work, and to work with the planning commission regarding the criteria for approval as outlined in the municipal code. We also gain insight from the information and viewpoints you provide. Your input is welcomed and appreciated. We're here to listen to and carefully consider all relevant information items for public hearing on the agenda. If you wish to speak tonight, you'll be recognized by me. When you come to the lectern, please provide us with your name and spell any uncommon names so that the record will accurately reflect your comments. And please also provide your address. We ask that you keep your comments relevant to the land use matter being discussed. And we ask that you direct your comments to the members of the planning commission. You will have three minutes to speak. We understand that issues before us tonight are important to those involved. And sometimes feelings and emotions run high. We ask that you respectfully listen to everyone's presentations. You may or may not agree with them, but please don't interrupt with applause or other kinds of demonstrations. Please direct your comments to, again, please direct your comments to the planning commission, not to the applicant or the speakers. Okay, with that, Ms. Tovar, will you please call the roll?
Chair Anderson?
Here.
Vice Chair Curtis?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Wi.
Here.
Commissioner Felbush?
Here.
Secretary Van Buthen?
Here.
Okay, thank you. We have a quorum and more. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes for the May eleventh meeting. Does anyone have any, does anyone want to amend the minutes? Changes?
Your changes?
Changes? Okay. If there are any changes, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes?
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second?
We have a second. With that, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nay, extensions. Great. So we had moved in second and approved for the minutes of May eleventh. Right. Onto the next item on our agenda. And tonight we have one land use item, on the agenda item. Staff will introduce and then make a presentation about that item. The applicant will then make their presentation. After the applicant's presentation, the public hearing will open. And if you signed up to speak or will want to speak, you may do so at that time. All right. Anne Johnson, Community Development Director, will now introduce the carrying pathways conditional use permit listed on the agenda for public hearing.
Thank you, Chair Anderson, and members of the planning commission. So tonight we are hearing a land use application. This is a redevelopment application located at five oh two Second Street. It is for a veterinarian office as well as a pet crematorium. So as you can see on this aerial, it is located on the east side of Second Street. And it is north of Mountain Avenue. For those in the audience that aren't accustomed to attending planning commission meetings, I'm just going to walk through the process of the hearing as well as the process of land use applications in Berthoud. So the first item that an applicant does is illustrated on this slide. And that's the pre-application phase where the applicant or potential developer comes to talk to the town staff and finds out about fire code, finds out about building, engineering, operations, what concerns we may have. As well as we talk about the land use code, the zoning, to make sure that the proposed use is compatible with our zoning as well as like the Mountain Avenue overlay district or even a comprehensive plan. So once we've had that discussion, the applicant then evaluates what they've heard with, are they willing to do those extra items and comply with the town code and policies? Then the application is submitted. It goes through a referral process, staff writes comments, and oftentimes, an applicant goes through several rounds of review. This particular review, because again, it is a redevelopment, I believe they only went through two rounds of review. So they were really efficient with their application. Then we schedule meetings, we post a sign, we provide notice in the paper and to surrounding property owners. On the third step is then that public meeting and hearing, and that's where we are tonight. And then after, if, if the application is approved, then they will need to meet conditions of approval. They might have to enter into a development agreement. And there would be some post-approval actions that they would need to take. So again, this is where we are at that public meeting stage. And then tonight, Chair Anderson, you did walk through, you know, we're going to have a staff presentation, then the applicant will make a presentation, then the public hearing, so those in the audience will have an opportunity to come and speak about their feelings on the application. And then that public testimony and public hearing portion will be closed. And then that's a time where planning commission has the opportunity to discuss amongst themselves or ask any follow-up questions. So again, the application is for carrying pathways, veterinarian and pet crematorium services. It is a conditional use by, a conditional use permit. The applicant is Jeff Lewis, and he is here tonight. Currently, the zoning is M one, which is the light industrial zone district, and it's just over a quarter acre site. This is a photograph of the current facility. They, of course, will have different signage. And the shake awnings will be replaced with a different type of awning. And the applicant can also talk about other site improvements they may be planning to make. This is a layout of the building itself, just to give you an idea of the activities going on in the three different bays or the three different areas. And the applicant can walk through the details of their footprint. For a conditional use permit, we're really not looking at the details of what's happening inside. We're more concerned with, is this appropriate siding for the use? But again, if you have questions about the details, they can walk through that for you. Again, you're taking a look at the elevations. Those are already existing, so the north and south elevations are a plain wall. But again, those are already existing, that east elevation is the back. And then that north elevation, excuse me, you can see those shake awnings have been replaced with more contemporary awning styles. The conditional use permit, again, the twenty twenty one comprehensive plan notes this area as part of the innovation district, which does promote light industrial uses. The business will bring new jobs to the town of Berthoud. And the site will use the existing structure and facilities, so it's not an overburden on existing community facilities. The review criteria is included in your packet, and it's also on this slide. Let the record show that there are review criteria from section thirty dash three dash one oh six of the land use code. Staff, referral agencies did find that the application met those review criteria. And so this slide and the next slide, there are seven criteria in total. If you want to go over the criteria in detail, I'd be happy to talk about that. But they're in your packet. So unless you have questions, we don't have to talk about those. And then tonight, we have the conditional use permit, proposed motions. So staff and referral agencies did find that the application materials did meet the criteria for approval, the comprehensive plan, as well as overlay district. There are two conditions of approval that we do request that you, in your motion, you include them. One is replace the exterior lighting on the building with dark sky compliant lighting, if it's not already dark sky compliant. And then the other is install the new canvas awnings on the exterior of the structure as they've illustrated in their proposal. So in your motion, your cheat sheet motion, the motion for approval is reflecting the correct applicant. The motion for denial actually was a carryover from a previous application. It says the beta subdivision, I believe. So that was just a typo, it didn't get caught. Just if you do use that motion for denial tonight, just make sure you insert the correct application name. And with that, I am happy to address any questions that you might have on process. And then we can ask the applicant to come up and give a more detailed presentation about the specific use.
Any questions about the process for, right?
Nope.
I think we're good there.
Okay.
And just as a reminder, please state your name, address.
Jeff, you can either use this to toggle back and forth, or you can use this.
Okay.
This does have a pointer, it's a little bit red on there.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, my name is Jeff Lewis. My address is fifteen ten Heirloom Drive in Windsor, eight oh five five zero. So, I want to just start out describing caring pathways. We're a specialty veterinary practice that helps families in the end-of-life care for their pet. And so when a pet has reached that hospice care phase of their life, our veterinarians will assist in the home for those treatments. And then when it's time to say goodbye to the pet, our veterinarians will visit the home and perform euthanasia. And in my opinion, there's, there's no better way. It's, it's a tough enough time as it is to have to say goodbye to a pet. But being able to do that in the comfort of your own home, where the pet is comfortable and, and not extra stress for having to take them in somewhere for that, for that process to happen. We really, we really appreciate being able to serve families in that way. We're a large veterinary practice, we have twenty-five veterinarians that serve from Castle Rock to Wellington. And so we cover the entire front range of Colorado. And all of our veterinarians are just really special people that have that heart to, to listen to the clients, to answer their questions, and to step into that grief that they're experiencing at that time. We also have an amazing team of, of, um, calm client care team that help with the phone calls. And oftentimes, those phone calls are fifteen, twenty minutes long as a, as a person is struggling, coming to make that decision about their pet, and then wanting to know as much as possible about what that appointment will be like. And so, very special team. We were the first practice in the nation to achieve American Animal Hospital accreditation for end-of-life care, which is the quality standard for veterinary medicine. We're really proud of that. And just have an amazing group of people that are serving families all up and down the front range. And it's really a comfort to the families when the veterinarian that has just been there with their family and been a part of that intimate saying goodbye process, to see their pet leave still in the care of that veterinarian. And so the veterinarian will take that pet into their, into their care, into their vehicle, and then be able to help transport them to a cremation facility. And what we've decided as a company is to extend our services into cremation as well. So we can add that extra layer of, our company and our veterinarian and our team are going to take care of your pet all the way to the point when, when we deliver the ashes back to you. And you have that memorial of, of your pet. And so that's why we want to open up a cremation operation. We're seeing hundreds of families a month. And, you know, we're close to a thousand pets a month right now. And so our cremation operation needs to be robust. And we'll be serving a significant number of cremations on a monthly basis. So we're really, we're really pleased that we're able to take that step and expand our services into cremation. So taking a look at the, the presentation, Anne did a great job covering the, the use or the building that we're, we're want to purchase. That building has three separate units. And we're going to use one unit for our veterinarian team. Now veterinarians work on the road, but they need a place to come, to stock up, to, to have a place to, to bring the pet after an appointment. And then they get back on the road and go serve the next family. We have two offices for caring pathways. One is at Centennial. And the other one is at the Johnstown exit right now on Mountain View Road. When we purchase this building, we're going to transfer that office on Mountain View Road to this unit one in this building. So our veterinarians will have a new home in Berthoud for, for what they need in, in a building. And then we're going to use units two and three to set up the, the pet cremation operation. And unit three will be primarily the home of the cremation retorts, which I'll talk more about here in a moment. And unit two will be more of the administrative and other processes that take place with the cremation. So you've seen the building already, has three unique units. We're installing new cremation equipment. It's manufactured in, in California. I've done a lot of research on what the best units are, what's, what's the best that I'd be able to purchase for this operation? And I settled on these units. You'll see that there's a multi-chamber unit, is what we call it, and that has four, four chambers. And that means one pet is cremated at a time in those chambers. And so that leads to a private cremation, where the family's getting back their ashes, the ashes of their pet in the return. The larger unit is used for cremations where the family is not wanting their ashes back. And so that, that serves multiple pets being cremated at, at one time in a very, very efficient manner. I was attracted to these units because they're high-tech. I have a software and technology background, and so I always look for ways that technology can help in, in the process. And so they have industry-leading efficiencies. And then there's also live online monitoring by the manufacturer to ensure efficient operation. And that was another major selling point for me as well, where they can help us be proactive. And if they see something that needs to be addressed, they can get in contact with us. Excited to be creating jobs as a serial entrepreneur. Job creation is, is at the top of my list of what really turns my crank as an entrepreneur. And this cremation operation is going to create some, some great new jobs. Annual, estimated annual payroll of approximately six hundred fifty thousand. Twelve skilled team members with opportunities for advancement. And then team members achieve industry certification. So they will be, they will be skilled employees, skilled team members. They'll specialize in equipment operation, manufacturing, customer service, and grief support. And then we're excited to introduce the town of Berthoud to residents all up and down the, the front range. There'll be times where a family will want to come to the cremation operation for a witnessed cremation, where they actually want to see the process taking place. It's a way for them to say goodbye one more time and have that assurance that the ashes that are returning to them are, are there, are, is, are from their pet. And so there is a witness cremation operation that families will be able to visit the site. And then other, other families will visit the site to, to retrieve the ashes, to pick up their, their final remains and everything that goes along with that. And so not all of our clients will do that. We, we deliver ashes back to veterinary hospitals. If that's where the client wants to pick up their ashes, we are other off the office in Centennial. But I think many, many residents will be able to, to see Berthoud for the first time by visiting our cremation operation. And then key takeaways, we're making a significant investment to make birth at our home. There's a lot of equipment that, that is being purchased for this. And once it's set, it's, it's set, you don't just pick up and, and move to another location. And so we intend, and that's why I wanted to buy a building as well versus leasing a space. I wanted to have a home for the next twenty years for this, this operation. There's a high-level business professionalism. We'll be improving the site, the look of the site from the exterior. And it's a tech-focused operation. And then we have a strong commitment to innovation and, and community involvement as well, as I outlined in the application. Last thing I wanted to mention, Anne didn't say that there was a, a concern that was expressed by a community member about the smoke stacks. Worried that there was smoke stacks coming into the neighborhood. And just wanted to contextualize those. You can see on the, the drawing here, the smoke stacks are not prominent to the building. They'll extend about six feet above the, the roof. All right, so about as tall as I am on the top of that seventeen-foot roof. And so they won't be a very prominent feature within, within the neighborhood. But they're there, they, we do need those. We needed a way of exhausting, exhausting from them, from the machines. And the machines run very clean, very technical, and have afterburners, kind of like catalytic converters to, to burn any remaining soot in the smoke before it's exhausted. And most of the time, vast majority of the time, all you'll see is some heat waves emitting from those two stacks. We planned on starting out with two units. And then as we grow, we plan on adding a third unit in the future. So it'd start out with two units in the operation. So that's the extent of my presentation. Look forward to answering any questions or hearing any comments that you might have.
You said you would do a thousand a month? Is that, is that an estimated number on it?
Yes.
Okay. And they would, this is your only facility that does this, right? Going from Castle Rock to Wellington, correct?
Okay.
And then, is there, is there signage on the outside of the building? Signage for your, for your business?
Signings would be understated, because clients don't come to the facility for veterinary. And that's, I guess that's another point I wanted to make, but I forgot. We're not a competition to the existing veterinary practices in the city. We actually get referrals from Berthoud Animal Hospital. When a client calls and asks that they do at-home euthanasia, if they're not able to do that, then, then they'll get referrals from us. And so we specialize and focus on, on the euthanasias.
And whether I read it or you said it, there's also, I don't mean to say there's like twenty-five veterinaries that are associated with you.
That are my employees.
And is that part of the six hundred fifty thousand payroll?
No.
Okay.
That's just the. Yeah, no, that's just the cremation staff. So yeah, it's two separate businesses, basically. We have caring pathways, the veterinary practice, and then the sister company, which will be the cremation operation.
Okay, my last question has probably very little to do with you, but I just don't know, I never had a pet. Are there pet cemeteries to people?
There are, there are, definitely. There's Evergreen Pet Cemetery and Seven Stones in, in Denver. And then Precious Memories at the, the Mulberry Exit. They're, they're northern Colorado. So I know of three prominent pet cemeteries. And we offer that to our clients as well. We really believe that aftercare shouldn't be an afterthought. Meaning if, if you have final wishes for your pet, meaning burial, self-buryal or burial at a cemetery, where if, if our client even has another cremation operation that they're more comfortable with or they have a relationship with, that's, that they have the agency to, to make those choices. Thank you.
Well, I guess maybe just, I mean, it seems like the one, I just want to say that it's very compassionate. I think it really is very compassionate, that doesn't go unnoticed. Just wanted to talk a little bit more about, I guess, the, the smoke stacks. So you said that it won't, you said it's going to be like a wavy kind of heat thing. Do you, do you have like an estimate of, is that like a twenty-four hours a day kind of thing? Or is that, you know, is it hard to predict, like, you know, how often that goes? Maybe those machines have to run all the time or?
Yeah, so during a shift, and, and our, our initial plan is to offer four ten-hour shifts to operate those machines. And so operating forty hours a week and under four ten-hour shifts. Those machines have the highest level of efficiency once they reach temperature. And so the starting and stopping of the, of the cremation process actually is less efficient than doing, having continual use of those. And so we would anticipate four days a week, ten hours a day.
Thank you. And I have a question for you, Chair Johnson, just the. So this is pretty close to Mountain Avenue, and you talked about kind of like lack of signage or like, you know, don't want to kind of overstate. Does this fall under a Mountain Avenue overlay requirement? And is all that kind of good? Like a lack of sign, is that good?
Yes, yeah, that is good. And what we'll do is when they apply for a sign permit, we will evaluate that sign permit, you know, with the Mountain Avenue overlay, with their standard sign requirements. So that, that will be evaluated at that time.
Okay. Yeah, we plan on having the, the building numbers prominent on the. No.
Okay.
That's just the. Yeah, no, that's just the cremation staff. So yeah, it's two separate businesses, basically. We have Carrying Pathways, the veterinary practice, and then the sister company, which will be the cremation operation.
My last question has probably very little to do with you, but I just don't know. I never had a pet. Are there pet cemeteries to people?
There are, there are definitely. There's Evergreen Pet Cemetery and Seven Stones in, in Denver. And then Precious Memories at the Mulberry Exit. They're, they're in Northern Colorado. So I know of three prominent pet cemeteries. And we offer that to our clients as well. We really believe that aftercare shouldn't be an afterthought, meaning if, if you have final wishes for your pet, meaning burial, self-buryal or burial at a cemetery, where if our client even has another cremation operation that they're more comfortable with, or they have a relationship with, that's, that they have the agency to, to make those choices.
Well, I guess maybe just, I mean, it seems like the one I just want to say that's very compassionate. Doesn't go unnoticed, just wanted to talk a little bit more about, I guess, the, the smoke stacks. So you said that it won't, you said it's going to be like a wavy kind of heat thing. Do you have like an estimate of, is that like a 24 hours a day kind of thing? Or is that, you know, is it hard to predict like, you know, how often that goes? Do those machines have to run all the time?
Yeah. So during a shift and our, our initial plan is to offer four 10-hour shifts to operate those machines. And so operating 40 hours a week and under four 10-hour shifts. Those machines have the highest level of efficiency once they reach temperature. And so the starting and stopping of the, of the cremation process actually is less efficient than doing, having continual use of those. And so we would anticipate four days a week, 10 hours a day.
And I have a question for you, Dr. Johnson, just the. So this is pretty close to Mountain Avenue and you talked about kind of like lack of signage or like, you know, don't want to kind of overstate. Does this fall under a Mountain Avenue overlay requirement? And is all that kind of good? Like a lack of sign?
Yes, yeah, that is good. And what we'll do is when they apply for a sign permit, we will evaluate that sign permit, you know, with the Mountain Avenue overlay, with their standard sign requirements. So that, that will be evaluated at that time.
Yeah, we plan on having the, the building numbers prominent on the building. And then each door will have a sign that indicates what's, what's behind that door. So one will say Carrying Pathways, the other two will say Amare, which is a Latin word that means to care. That's what we're calling our, our cremation operation. And, but you don't need, we're not attracting the public to the building.
Question to talk about the retorts and as far as clearing California regulations.
Yeah. And that's why I chose them is that they meet every, every emission standard in the state of, in the United States. And so they get them approved in every state. And because California is the toughest to, to be approved. And so really believe that we found the best of the best in terms of the equipment that will be installed.
No, I appreciate that. And it sounds like, like you said, once you go with those machines, they, they industrial machines, they stay in place. But they probably have a lifespan. So like, I guess we would just, if you were, I guess, is there a possibility you would replace them with something not as efficient or?
No, I mean, with the amount of capital we're investing into them, it's going to take a while to get that ROI on those. And they, they, I know of machines that are in use for, for 25 years.
I don't have any.
I just wondered, I think, I think Dr. Johnson, you mentioned that there was some comments around landscaping. Wondering, we were kind of talking about the building and wondering if there's anything happening on site. There's not a whole lot of landscaping at all. It's kind of right up against the building. Just sort of wondering if there's anything going on site beautification or.
Yeah. So first of all, upgrading by, that, that building has not been painted in a long time. And so we believe with replacing the awnings over the building, replacing a nice dark sky lighting on the, on the facility, new coat of paint, new doors, that sort of thing is going to help. And then we'll evaluate the landscaping. There's probably just a, a two-foot strip of landscaping area across the front of the building. So there are some nice evergreens that are there now, but we'll be considering making some changes there in the future, but not to start.
Yeah, just saying, some of the photos are sort of like a dreary winter day. Just didn't know it's.
Thank you.
Any more questions? I just have. No, go ahead.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation. And I second the compassion behind this kind of organization. I have a question that I really don't want to sound rude or imposing. So I'm sorry, it does. I, I'm wondering, since we discussed the emissions around the stacks in terms of like their appearance, would there be odor associated with the smoke stacks? And is that something that you worry about impacting the neighborhood?
Great question. Thanks for bringing that up. There, there's no external odor associated with it. As I mentioned in the application, there are times when a deceased pet has, has a particular odor. And we're going to have a very large walk-in cooler in the facility to, to make sure the pets are kept at appropriate temperature to, to prevent decomposition. But nothing that would be external to the building.
Okay, thank you. I, I, that was actually the question I was going to ask. I wrote down odor remediation, but I, I actually have another question came to mind. Why, why did you choose Berthoud? What was the, I'm just curious.
I'm, Northern Colorado is my home. You know, I've, I grew up in Frederick, Colorado. I went to Colorado State University and was able to raise my family in Fort Collins. And so Northern Colorado is my home. I wanted the facility to be close where I can get there. If I need to roll up my sleeves and help with something over the weekend or some other time, I want to be able to do that. And the real estate, I wanted to find existing real estate that would help us to get this up and running as soon as possible and not go through an 18 to 24-month building project. And so that building is just really well-suited for us. It's, there's nothing fancy about it, but that's, we don't need anything fancy. It's a large concrete block building and it's going to, it's going to be excellent usage for us.
Sounds like you found the, you found the right fit.
Yes.
And again, I, I too was, was very happy to see your presentation and how caring it was. And that, and your devotion to pet owners, I thought was really, was really striking through your, through your materials. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? No? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your consideration.
So let's, let's open our public hearing. So at this point, the public hearing is open. Like to make comments, please approach the left turn, state your name and your address. You have three minutes to speak.
Hi, I'm Jim Cummings. I live in A18 in White Oak in Winter. My own building just up the street, 602 West Second. I've got no complaints, but it sounds like a great business and it sounds like you're trying to do it the right way. I just have a couple of questions, maybe more for the applicant, but I can't ask them directly. But just kind of more like what to expect. It sounds like it's good machinery for the, for the cremations and it sounds like they need high standards. Some of the things that me and a couple of the neighbors have been wondering about is will there be like other sort of emissions that beyond just smell or things of that? Is, will there be like fine particulates like ashes on the cars or anything like that? Is there any themes that you can't smell that would be any concern to neighbors or anybody like that? Is, is there specialized machinery like that? I would imagine it needs to be inspected on a regular basis. So it would just be kind of interesting to hear how often does it get inspected? And is it like a specialized inspector for those kind of units? And then the last one is be like for waste disposal. If there's, doesn't it suck there's chemicals involved? But does sound like there might be some ashes that are, aren't for private cremations. And I just wonder if there's any special considerations on how that is taken care of. As far as how it's processed or, or taken care of for disposal.
Hold on, just a second. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment? Now I'm going to, I will close the hearing. Hearing is closed. All right. So obviously we have some more questions for you. So if you would, if you would. So let me pose some of the questions that were asked by the gentleman who's speaking. Would there be any other emissions like ashes that could happen on cars? Would that happen, particulates that could come out of those smoke stacks or elsewhere?
Yeah, the answer is no. And something that's happening in concert with the, with this conditional use approval is also needing to meet the Colorado air standards. And we have a permit that we have to reply for and, and it's achieved, received before we can operate the cremation operation. And so we have to have a, a permit to operate from the Colorado, sorry, the, you were talking about acronyms earlier. I can't remember what the acronyms are for that, for that organization. But they have to sign off on quality, air quality standards and what the emissions would be coming from those units. And again, the manufacturer that I'm purchasing for from has never, never been turned down by, by the state. And so there would not be any ash, ash that is falling on, on cars or around the, the operation. It really is a clean gas. It's, it's, there's an afterburner process that takes place before the air leaves the chamber. It's burned one more time to make sure there are no particulates or there are no visible particles, particles that are exiting the, the units.
And you mentioned permitting. Do you have periodic inspections that are required by the state or by the federal government?
Yes, the state government requires, I believe it starts out at a, at a two-year cycle to be re-permitted to operate those machines. Anytime we make a change, it needs to be re-permitted. And they have, they have surprise inspections as well to make sure that these, these machines are being operated appropriately.
Waste disposal.
Yeah, waste disposal. So I'm starting out with, with the ash for, for families that don't want their ashes returned. We call that communal cremation. And those ashes are collected and then scattered at a peaceful location on behalf of, of those families. Sometimes it's at a serene farm location. Other times it's at a property in, in the mountains. There's kind of a trade-off. I already have two properties lined up. And those ashes would then be scattered in an appropriate place on behalf of those families. And so those ashes are never discarded. They're scattered in a, in a peaceful location so that family has that reassurance that their pet's in a peaceful place.
So would you be taking animals from, let's say, a city pound that have been euthanized as well and do the same thing?
We, we intend on this to be an internal operation.
What percentage of people actually take the ashes home?
Approximately about 60%.
So just kind of follow up on waste disposal. So there's not like a dumpster somewhere. There's no potential for vermin that are trying to sort of like gather around remains? Or I'm assuming there's probably a certain amount of stuff and blankets or whatever that potentially comes in along with the pets? You know, is that all sort of managed similarly?
Yeah. So we will have a dumpster at, at the rear of the building that we're adding an enclosure to. So it will be screened off and secured because as a business owner, I don't really care to take other people's trash. And so those dumpsters will look, that will be in a screen location and secured. And, you know, we have office operation that's taking place within, within that. So that generates paper and, and office trash on the veterinary side of things. We use reusable towels and blankets. But then there's also what we call P pads that are used quite frequently that, that ends up in our, in our dumpster. But, you know, if a blanket or a toy comes in with the pet, we try to get that back to the family or donate it to, to a shelter and not have that end up in the trash.
We have farcical receptacles that are safe, you would throw away.
Yeah, we have sharps, sharps containers for the veterinary side of things. And we have a service that fixes that from our operation. Those don't end up in the landfill.
This is really big on the East Coast and West Coast. I don't know if it's applicable or it's applicable to your business. Are there any hazmat issues at all?
No. And, yeah, I can go into the difference between cremation and aquamation. If you had questions about that, I actually considered doing aquamation, which is a water-based process for decomposing a body, similar to the fire base, but it takes a lot longer and there's a lot more chemicals involved in, in that process. And so, and you need much more in terms of machinery for, for the cycle times. It takes a 20-hour cycle time for the aquamation to occur. And so that just is very difficult for efficiencies. So if I was opening up aquamation, then yes, there would be a lot of strong base around. But with the, the flame cremation, no hazmat.
I do, I guess just one more follow-up question. I mean, this is kind of in the context of potential impacts to adjacent businesses. And so you said this is all internal. And I hate to kind of get to like the logistics of the emotional thing, but I saw there were garage doors on the max. Transfer vehicles go in.
Yes.
Correct. Four shots, transfer of a deceased.
It's all internal. So yeah, we have those three garage doors on the back. One will be used by veterinarians coming back from appointments. And then the middle unit will be used by our driver, who will be going to our Denver office to retrieve bodies and coming back to the, coming back to the facility. No, we, we treat it with a high level of respect. You know, there are some cremation operations that it lacks in that. And it just is heartbreaking to the families to see, see cremation operation that's not operated at the highest levels of professionalism and respect for the pets and never going to go there as a company.
This may be a really ignorant question. I'm sorry. So some of the animals are already deceased and some are not. Is that a correct statement?
No, they're all deceased.
They are?
Yes. Now, we will have, as part of the cremation unit, we'll have what's called a comfort room. And if a family wants to come and have a witnessed cremation and have a viewing before the cremation, we'll have a nice sitting room that's set up that like you might see in a funeral hall for somebody to come in and, and see their deceased pet. We might make use of that from time to time on the veterinary side of things, where a family's not comfortable bringing their pet into, or a veterinarian coming into their home, but they would like for us to, to, to treat their pet. And so they might bring their pet to that comfort room for, in what we'd call an in-office euthanasia. But I can't see that being more than 1% of our.
So when you said that pets would be comfortable in their own homes, then the veterinarian goes there.
Yes.
And that's where, okay, I didn't connect the dots.
In-home pet euthanasia and hospice care.
Are you, just one more question. Domestic, small domestic.
Yes. And at Carrying Pathways, we only treat dogs and cats. There are other cremation operations you might hear of that they, they also do horses and have a much bigger machine for that. And that's not where we're going. We don't, you know, treat horses.
Any other questions? Thank you again.
You're welcome. And just last comment, we want to be a great neighbor. And thank you for coming tonight. And we want to be a great neighbor to, to everybody that's around. We want them to, to feel comfortable sharing concerns with us. If there's something that they don't understand or, or experiencing that's, that's in any way of a concern to them, our door will always be open to have, have those conversations and, and perform remedies where we can.
Thank you for that. Hard time to deliberate and discuss them ourselves. So any comments that anyone wants to make, someone want to start with a comment?
So I guess maybe just a clarification from Director Johnson that this, this goes to the trustees too as well.
Yes, yeah. Depending on either motion for approval or denial, at that moment in time, staff represents your motion and takes it to the trustees.
Yeah, just making sure that's always conditional.
If we don't have any deliberation or discussion, then I would entertain a motion.
I will move to forward a motion of approval of the Carrying Pathways Conditional Use Permit to the Town Board of Trustees due to the findings in the staff report, including compliance with land use code, the criteria for approval found in section 30 dash 3 dash 106, and the comprehensive plan to the town trustees for considerations subject to the conditions of approval found in the staff report.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Yes, a motion and a second. Mr. Johnson, would you please call the rule? Chair Anderson? Yes. Vice Chair first?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Wi? Commissioner Falmish?
Yes.
Looks like we have, we have those approvals. Congratulations. And that leads us to the next item on our agenda for the board of staff. And she's glad, she says she can't wait to enlighten us about the anatomy of a staff report for our work session.
So they have, you have three sheets or two sheets with you tonight. And I thought, let's talk about what goes into a staff report, how information gets in here. And we'll use the staff report that you just had for that particular hearing. So before a staff report is created, there is like a list of referrals that an applicant would get. So let's say there were, you know, questions from engineering or questions from the fire protection district. Those referrals are collected and then there's like a cover sheet that goes to the applicant with all of those referrals. They then respond to those referrals and do a second. They then respond to those referrals and do a second, third, fourth. We have some that are on six, seven, eight submittals. Until they get.
You were just saying, when you say referrals, can you define what that means?
Sure, sure, sure. When we hear an application, because we're we're not operating in a vacuum. We send the application materials to the fire district, the school district when it's appropriate. You know, not for a commercial or industrial project. Sometimes, you know, the library district. Well County or Laramo County, if it's close to their borders. If we were adjacent to another community, we'd send it to them. We send it to the engineering department, operations department, parks department. All of the internal departments within the town of Berthardt. They all get, I think it's twenty days to review the application materials. So they're looking, you know, the fire department is looking for how many fire hydrants, how many do we need? Is there enough turning radius to get around a corner? Can their trucks make that move? Response times. Our engineering department is looking for. If there's a non-podable water system, is it sufficient in size? Are the pipes adequately sized? So they're looking at all the details that as a planner. I don't have the expertise to look at infrastructure like that. So they're looking at those things. They're looking at the depth of road profiles. And our parks department is looking for the plant specifications and selection. And then we look at, has the has the trails master plan been incorporated correctly? So we're looking at all of those different facets and we need all of the different experts within Berthardt. But as well as those outside agencies, oh, like ditch companies, if there are ditches on the property, the ditch company is getting a referral. So all of the utilities get a referral as well. So Peter Valley REA, Excel. Anybody who's servicing that project and that property, they get an opportunity to respond to the project as well. And so when we send the referral out, then we'll collect all of their responses. And we give them again about four weeks. Now, we say in our referral, if you don't respond, that's going to signify you're not going to say anything. And sometimes, you know, just recently, I got a referral that was due a year ago. From somebody and he said, oh my goodness. And so you try to figure out, all right, is if somebody may be in a different filing or a different phase. How can we address those concerns or is it too late? So so those of course are are concerning, but luckily it wasn't.
What they were talking about.
Yeah, and that that is, it's frustrating. So, so all of that goes into then how do we? How do we use those referral agency comments? Then when we, as the planners, are taking a look at the comprehensive plan and the trails master plan. And the land use code. And one of the very first things we do when we have those pre-application meetings of. What's your address? What is your zone district? And in that table in the land use code, does the use you're wanting to do, is it on the list? And sometimes you have to take a look, look at the list, and then we look at the definition section. And does something, does it fit? Is it, is it, is there a gray enough area or is it an absolute no? And we've had to tell people, I'm sorry, the use that you're proposing does not meet the intent of our land use code. And so, you know, if we want to change the zone, here's the process. But then we talk about, you know, spot zoning, which is. Like if they wanted to do an industrial facility in the middle of a neighborhood. And then we have to talk about compatibility and all of those other things. And sometimes people say, well, I I'm going to apply for this. I I don't care what you have to say. And then we've also had to say to applicants, just be apprised that planning commissioner and the town trustees. Don't have to go with staff's recommendation. But if you're adamant about applying for a land use permit that doesn't meet the code. Even before we evaluate your application, we're going to have to tell you, we're most likely going to have to recommend denial. So we have reality, we have really hard conversations with individuals to make sure. That the vision that's in the comprehensive plan, the guidelines and the land use code are being followed. Because that's what we're being given by you all and by given by the town trustees to do. So so that's the referral process. Sorry.
Where to guess that that actually happens, where it's somebody's just in denial of their situation?
I've only been in Berthardt for three months and I've had one conversation. Now, I've been in other communities and I've had conversations with with those too. But it doesn't happen that often. And the issue that I had was with somebody who wanted to do something. It was it was a question on can I apply for a waiver for something? And it wasn't in the code as waiverable.
Just like, I guess as a follow up in like, at least in my tenure on the commission, we've had one, I think, application that kind of like. I remember it came to us with a staff recommendation of not approval because the applicant was just like. I want to, I want to do it. I want to do it. It was actually kind of like a retroactive thing. We like did something they shouldn't have.
I don't know about that. I'll have to do some research.
It was a, it was a sign of just you.
Oh, okay.
And it was in conflict with the mountain avenue.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so the referrals come in and then we, you know, we're giving you just a general overview of. You know, who's the applicant, whether they're applying for the acreage of the project. What the zone district is. And then we're going to give you some of the bulk standards of the lot sizes, the widths. So that when you're taking a look at those height plans. You know, if you see something like, oh my goodness, you know, they're proposing the front setback of of twenty feet. Maybe we missed something in our review. And here it still has to be twenty five feet. We're all human. We make mistakes and make mistakes every day. So, you know, that's an opportunity just to evaluate those bulk standards and buffering and separation. Then the surrounding land uses. This is where you talk, you, we look at the compatibility. You know, who is something less intense near them or more intense? And as you can see on this one, on the north and the east side, those are the more intensive industrial facilities. And then on the south and west, they were similar. So then going to the next page, we just give a very simple background. Sometimes the background is going to be a lot more detailed. This one was pretty simple. What their proposal is and then the criteria and those findings. So the findings here, it runs on to the top of page three. This is where staff lists, what are the, what is the criteria for approval? And then that quick findings check. Did staff and the referral agencies find anything out of the ordinary? Where we couldn't recommend. Now, sometimes there might be an instance, and I can't think of it right now. But we might say, no, it didn't meet this finding. But then the rationale will be, however, we've asked the applicant to increase their buffering. Or we've asked the applicant to make a change. And so by conditioning that approval. We can then, they would then meet that standard. And so that that's, and this also sets the stage. Do you remember when Tammy from Sursac? Oh, something needs to go with their arms. But Tammy from Sursac was here. She said, sometimes this this criteria for approval is one of the most important things. Either to stay on the record, tonight there wasn't a large gathering. Target pitch works for us. So I I just made it clear that let the record show. That staff has found that the criteria for approval found in this section of the code. Had, you know, staff feels as though that that has been met. That's not an attempt from from me to like try to sweep things under the rug. I just felt there's one person here, probably, I'm going to set the record saying that it's been met. And if you had questions about a detail, we can talk about the questions. But if something's not controversial. I'm not going to leave this to you. You're also grown, educated grownups. Yeah. And so then the next thing is public notice. And again, this is part of the process. Where we're saying, hey, you know, we we mailed the property owners within three hundred feet, which is required in the code. On this date, we posted a sign or the applicant posted a sign on a certain date. And then the legal notice was published on this date. So that we're following the process, we're establishing that record. So if there's ever a question, we can say, you know, it's documented that we followed the. The process. And then the findings and recommendations. So this is just where, all right, now you've gone through all of this. You know, the history, the criteria, and this and the public notice. And then this is where we get to the findings. It's kind of the the leading, the process to lead to the end. And then you have the attachments there. And what you can expect. So again, this was a pretty simple one. We've had more substantive cases than come before you all. And you're going to get a lot more history on those. Let's say, like in Lago, for example. They were annexed, they had a better approved zoning and that PUD plan, they were wanting to make some changes. So we like to set the stage where, you know, it was annexed on this date. This is when the, you know, the original vision was was made. Changes were made because of this reason. So we want to give you a lot of context. On this one, I didn't think it would be even important or relative for you to know. It was annexed nineteen sixty four and it was zoned in nineteen seventy two. You know, so so some of those things, we make an educated guess on what is going to be substantive. Because finding the annexation and the zoning history on this could also take us hours to get to digging through the files in the basement. So, you know, sometimes we have to make that decisions.
I think like the the distance changes depending on what the what the topic is. Is there some state or other regulations around, like if if it's the property owner or the tenant's notes? Or if it's a HOA, is the is the board notified or any of that sort of thing? To like oftentimes folks will come in, well, I didn't know about it and I should have, you know, a lot of times. So that's oftentimes why I have some sort of anxiety and emotion.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I made this cheat sheet because a lot of things are inconsistent in the code. But the most of the notice given in Berthardt. It's it's kind of split between five hundred and three hundred feet depending on the process. And then there is one for a neighborhood master plan, which is like thousand feet. And some of the notice may be statutory, but I don't know which are required by state statute. I think probably a PUD, but we don't even have PUDs. Definitely an annexation, maybe even a change of zone. They might set those limits, but even the change of zone, I think our code says in one area it's a three hundred feet. And then in another area it says five hundred feet.
Yeah.
So there are little inconsistencies in them in our code. So we just go with the more conservative.
And is it always good if the property owns?
Yes, it goes to the property owner registered with the Laramo Well County Clerk in the corner. So they use that as their source of information. So let's say you own five rental homes in Berthardt. And so your tenant is not going to get that mail. You as the registered property owner will get that mail.
Okay. And that's why we asked, we signed the properties to you, right?
Right.
So there's something going on there. It's waiting to sign, put up. It's visible for someone that's not going to get that.
Yep, and it's published in the newspaper as well.
Is that what the, the, when you would say the legal notice was published, we're referring to the newspaper?
Yes, exactly. Yeah.
So what happens as physical print media goes away?
Well, when, and no, that is actually a really good question because a lot of communities are going away from publishing in the newspaper. And instead just saying, hey, it's going to be on our website. And if you want information, then you have to check their website. But it's 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 a really, you raise a really good point because there are individuals that still take the paper. And that's the only way they're getting their information. And there will be people that will not have access to a computer. And so this is, this is another way to publish that. We also publish it, I believe, on the front door. There's a box on the outside that lists hearings as well. So it's it's posted, it's published. Then there's a great big sign you cannot miss that's put in the front yard too.
And we, I think we've had a couple of meetings that things have got shifted around because the notice didn't get published. Is is that what we were referring to?
Exact, that's exactly right. And so why are you asking these questions? Because, yes, if we, there was a time where the publication date was missed. And so if that is missed, we can't have the hearing because we're not giving the public adequate time to react. So we have to meet those publication deadlines. And sometimes we, what we like to do. If an application is going smoothly, oftentimes we'll pre, we will publish in the paper. The planning commissioner and the town trustee's hearing in one note that became soon. And then sometimes we'll also include that in the mailer that we send out to individuals just to cut costs. You know, but if something's going to be controversial or if, whoops, you know, we. Sometimes what what has happened also is notice went out to the surrounding property owners. And then the publication date was missed. So then we have to resend it out to the surrounding property owners to make that publication deadline. So it's all about giving notice and people fair warning so that they can feel as if they had an opportunity to participate.
And it just the mice group said, the tightening in the content of the notice and who has to be noticed. A lot of that is not, it's was defined in case law, you know, because of lawsuits that stem from due process law. And so then the state or the locality or the hassle or ordinance that mirrors what the court defined. For those things. And so that's kind of where we all, we get it from. And that's why it's a pretty, it's a pretty. It it's pretty serious thing when the notice isn't done in time. Or when the content isn't appropriate or when the right individuals haven't been noticed because it it gives them something that is actionable in court. Against that particular land use change or whatever.
When we, you're referring to the referrals going to, for instance, the fire protection district. Do they have a dedicated person on staff who has the knowledge of what they're looking for? Or is everything going to like Chief Charles and he also has to donate his time to the planning commissioner?
So so I said, when we have technical review committee meetings, that's kind of that pre-application meeting. Chief Charles is always invited to those. But we had one today and he said, I've got it, you know, we're writing all strategic planning. They can only be here for fifteen minutes. So I said, you've got the floor for fifteen minutes. He gave his, you know, listed his concerns and then he was out of there. So he, they always come to the technical review committee meetings and the pre-application meetings. I've also arranged some special meetings with the fire protection district and I, you know, have been talking to the school district a lot. Just if they can't come to meetings or if I don't hear from them, I do reach out to them. But Joe Dar, Joe Darmio is a dedicated staff person with, he's a consultant for the fire protection district. And he reviews and he's dedicated just to do that. So Chief Charles does a lot too.
He would have reviewed what we looked at tonight. To feel comfortable that these things aren't going to blow up.
Yeah.
And I would imagine other folks who catch stuff that maybe the fire department would be concerned about too, like either you or baseline.
What are, where, what referral would fall under the economic impact to the community? Such as amount of sales tax revenue, property tax revenue and how that impacts the town budget? Economic impact to the community, such as amount of sales tax revenue, property tax revenue and how that impacts the town budget?
So Walt, um, as the economic development director, he comes to those pre-application meetings. He's also a referral as well. And so he's taking a look at that. And oftentimes Walt, people will contact him first. And maybe he's helped them find the location or he's been part of that, man, don't go here, but maybe go here. He's kind of part of that site selection. If he gets an idea that people are wanting. To come to Berthold, he'll help them identify the most appropriate place. Um, in an annexation impact report, that's something that staff does right. And that will be the impact to services, the impact to fire, the impact to schools, the community college. All of those special districts, we have to um quantify what that impact is. We don't have to do that for every land use permit. I know that some sometimes in the conditions of approval. But generally, when a a project is generating jobs. And the developer is paying for the infrastructure. So let's say it's a subdivision. The town doesn't put in sewer pipe for the goodness of our heart because we feel like it. The developer has to put that in, development pays its way. So we're evaluating, evaluating. Um, when those final construction documents come in. Um, the engineers are evaluating and saying, hey, you know, you can't get. Concrete for five dollars a yard anymore, you need to up your cost estimates. So they're looking at everything really, really closely.
That's a lot of time, right? When the metro district kind of entity comes in, it's kind of, that's what's set up to bond for development. And then take on debt to fund that initial infrastructure.
Exactly, yeah. So if a developer is proposing a metro district. Then we evaluate that service plan. We like to evaluate the service plan before it even gets to like a preliminary plat. Because then all of those agreements are ironed out. Sometimes. Let's say that a development only needs a twelve inch line, twelve inch sewer line to service their development. But the town knows in the future, that line is going to have to be overs- is has to have to be larger than that size. To service the next development. So the town may pay a developer that difference between a twelve inch pipe and a thirty inch pipe. Just that material cost difference, they're laying pipe, they might as well, it doesn't matter what size they're laying. But we might pay that difference and then in the future, then we get reimbursed for that cost. So that we are, we're always looking for the future so that we're not having somebody. It it's just then becomes a burden to, I'm gonna have to put two parallel pipes and then that's not efficient or. Might as well disturb and move the earth once. Yeah, engineers are always, always thinking of the future here. Pretty smart to work with.
Thank you.
Yeah. They're an important part of the community development team and we, and it's for important coworkers as well. We really appreciate working with engineers. So, so that's the staff reporting. It's kind of the history of what goes in here. So you're. So you all are speaking, what you're saying might seem like a very simple document that you get. And again, sometimes they're going to be, you know, five, seven, ten pages. Sometimes they're very short and simple. But there's a lot of history and a lot of work that goes into this. And I just want you all to know that. You know, I'm not sitting in my office or Will or Lauren or sitting in their office at baseline and just saying, this thing's good, let's do it. There's actually some work that's going in behind the scenes. And Jonathan and Jonathan and Lauren who are are building permit tax. They also, Jonathan comes to all technical review team meetings too. Just if people aren't wanting to reuse a building, then they know, hey, you have to have. It inspected and let's get the building officials there. Um, to take a look at it before you buy the building to make sure you understand. What kind of retrofitting you're going to have to do so that they they ha- I'm not trying to have people make decisions based on data and facts. Than just making an assumption they can, you know, put up against a drawing long fall in the day. So good, so next, alright, so that's, do you have any other questions about this? Okay.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, yeah, it was fun. And and then now we have an opportunity to talk and laugh together. It's just, you know, it's it's good.
Um, wait, did everyone get a chance to sign the card? Make sure you give that.
Yes. Well, I have some bullets here, please.
Okay, go for it. I do too. I wrote down all notes.
Oh, good. So next Tuesday, um, the town trustee are having a work session on the water and the wastewater master plan. They're just, I think they have some initial. Um, findings and they're gonna present in just a work session. It's here. You're more than welcome to come. It's just gonna be a work session.
Well, they have pizza like last night.
It's going to be a special meeting that changed today.
Oh, it's good. Okay, so it'll be on the still next Tuesday.
What time? Six thirty?
Six thirty, okay.
No pizza then, if there's a special meeting?
Does it mean that action can be taken at the special versus just information absorption?
Then I have to have a public hearing, everything too.
It's not gonna be on that item, but it's a different item that came to us that we have to address. So that's why it turned into a special meeting.
I'll get some details on that on Tuesday. Um, then this is the Jan card. If anybody knows where to find her, let me know. If not, I'll just, I'll track her down. I'll have a tat and. Say, please, let them send her a card. Um, oh, bylaws. So I went through the bylaws. And this is in your E file, your E number two. But there isn't anything in the bylaws that talk about when election ends. However, I remember Jan, she kept talking about, well, I'm off in August, I'm off in August, you're gonna have to hold an election in August. So I'm just gonna go with August unless I can find it anywhere else on when election might be. So, so yeah, so elections can be in August and then you can decide what you want to do.
And actually on that, I realized that we kind of did like a little bit of a temporary reshuffling and I know that you were absent. That, is that okay or should we redo it?
No, no, it's fine. So obviously Karen is the chair. Chris is the vice chair. And John is the secretary.
You know, like normally that works out the opposite, right? When you don't show up is when you get.
Um, and two things that have gone to the town trustees, um, there are. The staff felt as if there were, there was a need to further. Detail what the expectations are for landscaping, such as if a development has trees that die. After warranty, yes, you get to replace them. Um, just some great ideas for plant selection as well. And so Erin Gannon came to the trustees on Tuesday night and she presented a final draft of the landscape guidelines. And then these are going to go to the tree committee just as an information session. So once we have these finally approved, I'll add them to your notebooks. So this is one more piece of good information to give developers. Homeowners can use this information. There's lots of great ideas in here for like vines whales instead of. Doing hard surfaces to make those look more natural. Um, and.
Should I just add something to the, uh, so our library, our librarian for the Berthold Library District has a podcast called Mrs. Berthold. And the latest episode is with our town forester.
Yes, yeah, that was in the, that's, that was in March or April, I think. And I went to that one.
Oh, okay.
Oh, but the podcast.
Yeah, so I don't know if it's, yeah, so now there's a conversation recorded. I actually have a listener yet to my queue, but. They they do actually, I think, offer the services to residences too, right? Like if you have a tree that's like, you know.
I don't know, Paul, does it, is anybody on Zoom? Are we being recorded?
Yes.
Well, I went to the breakfast and the the age of the individuals at the breakfast was was, you know. Um, they have time to go to breakfast at the library.
Yeah.
It was so adorable watching them just like, oh, Paul, come to my house. Yes, so he normally doesn't, doesn't do that. I don't think.
Of course, on landscaping, so say Joe resident somewhere existing is a big tree that's dying. Does he have to do something about that? I mean, does the city enforce something like that?
I don't know if Berthold enforces something that detailed.
So, so what, what is it for? Is is uh, o- older residents is grandfathered and they don't have to follow things? And it's for new neighborhoods and new developments?
Yeah, this is for new. So if you're, it's like, I mean, this even talks about if you're wanting to replace your landscaping with drought tolerant. Materials. So this is for new. Now, if there is a dead and dying tree. That might pose a threat to somebody else's property, that may be something to call the town about, but I. I I don't know all those details, but if you're wanting details, check.
Well, so for example, right, in most homeowners or even I guess metro districts, I'm not even sure. If you want to make a change, you have to go through the architectural control committee. Who supersedes who? The city or the architectural control committee? You have to go to both?
You'd have to go to both. Yes, so, but if you want to make a change in your property. I mean, we, we do not have staff time to go to everybody's landscape and and mandate. These regulations, you have to do this. These are more guidelines to help property owners. But these are guidelines then to direct new development.
Okay, I had a pond that died literally, literally today, an hour before this meeting.
Just filled over?
I put a new plant with the old one.
Okay, what is it? Let's look.
So that's, is is, are, are people empowered to do that? Is, I mean, I don't.
Yes, please, we want you to replant.
But but you don't have to get a permit or go meet with somebody or anything like that, right?
No, 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 no. If you are not, not at the town, at the, at your age or when, you may. But no, 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 we are not, we are no.
But I would recommend.
No, that's why I'm asking. I mean, if this thing was just, whether people follow the letter of the law or not, it's good to know the letter of the law.
Yeah, these are guidelines for existing, if you're wanting to make a change. These are going to be encoded, these will be codified eventually. And these will be new regulations for new.
For architectural committee and stuff, just submit everything at once that you think you might want to do, a single drawing. I mean, that way. Yeah, it's in the spirit of the drawing.
No, yeah, we do not have staff. Oh, you plug in three new permiels, congratulations. They're all by two inches, I don't know.
But with that said, my friends down the street, they ripped out their whole front yard and put in zero, we're kind of pretty kind of landscaping. And they got a kind note from the town of Berthold. Kind of thanking them for doing it. So somebody saw it and like they actually wrote them a handout and they said, thank you for putting in a water wise landscaping. I don't, I don't think it was Ken, but you know, so.
I know, I'm not holding the, the town office, maybe keys.
Yeah.
That's nice.
Yeah, it is nice, yeah.
One of my neighbors has been fighting with the H O A, the developer basically, was talking to Charles H O A. Because she put in zero scape.
Yeah.
And they were trying to make her change it for now over a year. She was, she's already got a lawyer, they've been fighting it.
She's gonna get a lawyer.
Well, zero scape is different than that zero scape, no. Yeah, we, we don't like zero scape.
Dirt, prepared scape or whatever.
Yeah, the zera, that means zerick is dry. The zera was when people just rip it all out and throw down rocks.
Top my ass, Ken.
And town is actually promoting water wise. We actually don't use the terms zero scape, sorry. Either term of the zero scape is actually water wise.
My, my neighbors is water wise because it's not all rock.
Oh, good, okay.
Almost all mulch and little plants everywhere.
It's nice, it's not.
It's kind of, it's actually very pretty. She's very into it, but.
Good. Um, and then the only other thing is, um, of course, so the B A M. Amendment to their P U D to allow for a fire district. That was approved on Tuesday by the town board. And then the Berthold self storage for their special use permit and your suggestion of adding more trees. Um, was approved, but then they went even further because I think there was some discussion about public art. And so they, um, they had, I believe, four conditions of approval. One was to ensure the access easement was in place. Two, to continue working with staff on landscaping. Consider public art. And there was a fourth, and I, I can't remember what the fourth one was. But so they heard you and then they. They read the minutes that we provided to them as well. And they heard that, you know, they read the discussion on public art and they added that. So we'll be working with them before they record their plat to. Um, they had ups their landscaping by seventeen trees. Um, be- between your hearing and the board's hearing. Um, but now we're going to see about the public garden, if they can or cannot do that. Usually, you know, storage facilities don't really want to advertise hanging or storage facility. Because that might elicit people with bad intents to try to come in.
You know, I wasn't sure what that art would look like. And the next day, literally, I drove through Longmont from Boulder. And they've got, you know, these spinning things and it's, it's, it's really quite beautiful. And then Nywha has these split rails. With boards going across. And then I thought, you know, that's really applicable to discussion we have.
Yeah. I'm sorry. And Berthold, we don't have a public. Yeah, we don't, we don't have, um, a public art program yet. But maybe it's something in the next few years where he would want to do. And that would have some good parameters on what is appropriate and when it's appropriate and. You know, is there a theme or do you want it to be business specific? So those are all great ideas to try to generate, you know, maybe somebody will have a public garden.
One of them, one of the cities I've lived in, they actually had, if if the building was a certain type of building for a certain years. Certain percentage of, in particular, was being built, a certain percentage of those costs. Had to go, and I knew it was like a really small percentage, but had to go towards some type of art installation or some type of public garden. So it'd be really interesting to see if that happened here.
I've heard of.
Yeah, or even taxes, you know, like a quarter, you know, a quarter of a percent. Goes to public garden, something like that, you know. Right, you never know.
What do we have for recreation and trails? Can we have a specialized tax?
Why do you ask me questions like that? I mean, what are sales taxes? Do you know?
I think it's pretty cool.
舉例? The, what the percentage that goes towards the rec center.
Not just the rec center, it's like all anything.
Trails, yeah, trails.
Yeah. I think it's one percent.
Yeah.
One percent.
But how is that broken?
No, I think it's one percent of the sale.
Michelle can tell.
Seven percent tax. Eight percent tax on a retail sale. And the whole percent is earmarked in a rec, a rec bucket.
You would think that Berthold with the number of artists, you know, that we have here, that we would have something like it, right? You know, just to be able to promote these people, you know, and like to.
Oh, wildfire art center is probably.
So the break down our town tax, we actually don't have that.
Oh, okay.
Down our total, like four percent of it is goes to the town of Berthold. And how that's open up, I don't know.
Is that something that you want to know? Is that you?
No, it was just coming up because you were. And I was just kind of saying, there's like a, there's some sort of precedent for it already in the town. At rec and trails.
I, it's good to have knowledge on all that stuff. So I think we head to a workshop or something.
I'll just get the information. Cindy doesn't need to come. No.
You know, what's interesting about our, our library is that the Friends of the Library, obviously, they raise, they're several organizations and they raise money for. Different things that the library needs. Um, and they actually, when the library was remodeled a few months ago, actually gave money to put in two pieces. Was there two? I think two. Pieces of art, um, both by prominent artists here. It's really cool that, that they were promoting. That they, they're promoting Bertha art too.
Well, um, and then the only other thing I have to say is that a senior planner has been. Offered a position and she has accepted. And she starts the end of June and I can't tell you her name. Because I just, I, she was on vacation. I mean, want to make sure she really did resign and she's not changing her mind. And I'm so excited for her. We've ordered her business cards and the name.
You're that confident.
I, I, I'm really, really excited and you're going to like her. She remains very calm under pressure. I've seen her, um, you know, under extreme, um, situations. And she just really remains very composed and graceful. Um, she provides great customer service and you're, you'll like her. Yes, I know. I'm really excited. Yes, get some help. And, and, and Baseline has done an absolutely wonderful job. And we will continue to need to, to utilize Baseline. Just from a financial standpoint, it's not sustainable over the long haul, um, for the town to be paying for outside consultants. But they will continue with everything that they currently have. And then just depending on the balance and the workload, they may continue to pick up new, new places to be in front of you, so.
Cause they still do engineering at the end, right?
Yes, yes. Noah is our town engineer, he's from Baseline, and then Mark, um, from Baseline does our construction inspection. And then there are other team members too. So we, we do rely very heavily on Baseline. Do a lot of help for the town and they're, they're doing a great job. And that honestly is, I believe, it's.
Can you tell us about like what our next meeting might be because of, um, pipeline cases?
Yes. So I have a sheet that's called Anne's Sentifier. And, um, this, this part of the sheet is on the website and it gets updated maybe twice a month. And it lists all of the land use cases, where they are, what they're for. The review status from Planning Commission is anticipated, and then when Town Trustees is anticipated. And I have this sheet too here.
Where, where is that located?
It's on the website, on the planning website. Um. I just shut my laptop off. But it's under like new cases or cases or pending review. And eventually I know that it used to have a link, but people could go in and they could click on the application. You could see application materials. When we switched websites, um, the hosting sites, that link was obviously broken. And so when I get the new planner, there are a lot of things that I just haven't had time to do, and that's one of them. So we'll, we'll get that done.
That's a one page summary, right?
Yes, that's a one page summary that is online. Yeah. Um, so at the next planning commission, actually, there is not a town trustee hearing, well, I guess now there is on the 30th. Uh, but your next planning commission is on the 8th. And I will be giving those packets to Michelle next Tuesday or Wednesday. And you have one land use item on, for a public hearing. And then I thought we could walk through the comprehensive plan that night and just like.
Or a pizza, right? I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty massive to try to tackle that all in one time.
Yeah, and I don't know if we'll go into details, but maybe just, okay, here, here's the guts. Or just not even the guts, here's that anatomy, like, here's the, the framework. And here are the different sections, and here's where you can find that vision material. Yeah, so that will be on the 8th of June. And then on, um, the 22nd of June, right now, we don't have anything scheduled. So you can either have a buy or we could walk through the land use code. And then, um, the 13th of July, we will not have, I have a, a personal obligation that night. We will not have, um, that information that night. So if you don't do it on the 22nd, then it's almost six weeks before your next one. And on that one, on the 27th, you do have a land use application scheduled as well. Yeah.
Now, let's give you that, cause you have the 22nd of June, I was going to let you know I have a personal conflict, but, uh. Um, so if you want to go through this land use code, turn, turn, fine, but, um. Uh, but it, I guess there's not like, there's an official business that can be added at this point, or an applicant, I guess what I mean.
It's probably really pushing. I mean, it's, it's very unlikely that we could get an application on that day.
Okay.
I mean, the same, if somebody, there is one individual that really wants on that night. But there, it's, it's, I don't think it's, it's a project. And I know that I have heard from some of you with times that you're going to be out over the summer. So if you are going to have some vacation, just go ahead and let me know now. So if there is a time where we're only going to have two. And then for my scheduling, I want to make sure that it's worth it for Baseline to come as well as applicants.
Let me ask, let me just ask you a question. Me and our last meeting had discussed whether or not we wanted to add something at the beginning of our meetings. Were, uh, which allowed anyone in the audience to be able to comment briefly on something. In the comprehensive plan. So we debated that a bit and we tabled it. Is that something you want to raise again now? You want to add it to the next agenda?
Well, and I know that the town attorney is very concerned about that. Because as the planning commission, I mean, we only update the comp plan every five or 10 years. Um, if somebody comes and says, well, I, you know, people are speeding down my street. Planning commission really doesn't have the ability to then direct the sheriff to go and do something. The town trustees have that ability to direct staff and the town to respond. So it's, it's a tricky, tricky smoke and that's in there. It was a script that I used for Laramie County Planning Commission. And it was, does anybody have anything to talk, that they want to talk about on land use matters? Because Laramie County Planning Commission are a lot more things, but they're the final say on it. And so it's, it's, I, I left it in there and I didn't mean to confuse the issue. Um, again, it's, it really is your call if you want to hear from people. Um, if you give, if you give, it's really hard to take away. So it's.
I, I come from a business background and as a president of a company, you, you have to take risks. That's just part of being the president of a company. You have to, you have to be risk oriented. And I realize lawyers many times are on the opposite end of that. But I think this is such a small issue and the, and the, the probability of, of us almost ever getting anything is so minimal. And since the majority last time, I, I believe was not in favor of it, I think we should just go with that. It doesn't, the value, it's, it's almost more of a. A visual thing to this, to the town, hey, we're offering this. And the fact of the matter is. It'll, it'll almost never, ever be practiced or used. So if there's a feeling that we'd rather stay away from it, I would support that decision.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with, yeah, not implementing that or tabling that, maybe we revisit it every year or a couple of years. But yeah, I don't, I'm, I'm in favor of not putting it on as a standard agenda item.
Well, what I will commit to is if I need to start getting a lot of calls from people, asking questions about the comp plan. Or asking questions that I think would be good to bring to you all, maybe we can revisit it. And I'll just keep track of, of those types of questions. Um.
I, and I would tend to agree. I, I, I don't think, you know, I don't think it's a good idea because of it. I, I guess I'm, uh, I think a risk may be difficult. And again, I, I hate to build people's expectations that we can do something. About something when most of the time, um, a lot of their issues, we can't make that kind of change. We don't have that authority. So, um, so I'm not, I'm not in favor, but I do like the idea of, of, you know, monitoring what people's comments are and that kind of thing. And we bring it up once a year or something, just to revisit that. So are we all kind of? Do I, do I sense a consensus that maybe we just wait and.
Yes.
Bring it up later. I didn't, I didn't want to break my promise and, and not bring it up. Pretty good with that?
Yeah.
All right, so kind of by consensus.
Oh, we forgot to do the pledge of allegiance.
I was gonna. I think we should probably plan on the agenda.
Yeah. Yeah, was it on the agenda?
Yeah, and I, and I didn't put it in my notes and, and I usually have notes on this kind of stuff, like I did on this issue and I didn't.
We'll get it on the agenda.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
All right. Did you all have any, did you all have reports or anything you wanted?
Well, that was one of mine. And my second one was when we were invited to, to join the town board. Um, I believe on training for kind of the whole water use, which I, I thought it was awesome. They said at that time, they were going to do another one on metro districts. And I was kind of excited to be part of that and, and. Do you know, can you find out what the status is of that, if that is indeed going to happen?
So they didn't have a training on metro districts. They just, they decided not to do a training. But instead they just adopted a policy on metro districts. And that was in a public meeting. So they didn't do an official training.
Are we encouraged not to go to public meetings? I'm just curious. I've heard that before.
No, no, no. You, as, you're all citizens of Bertha. You can go to any public meeting you want to go to and you do not have to stay away. Town trustees should not be attending or listening or watching later your public hearings. Because they could be then get a biased opinion about how they're going to vote on something in their public hearing.
So the, the metro district policies, then that's on your list somewhere else.
It is, it is, yeah. We can find that. Do you even remember when that was, Michelle?
I think maybe we might be remembering, well, it's the conversation, I think, is that if we are all at a public meeting. I think we might need to be a little careful that like not four of us aren't gathered around a circle to debate, yeah. Talking about stuff because that can be technically a meeting of the.
And if, yeah, if more than four of you attend, that could be deemed a meeting of planning commission, even if you're dispersed around.
Even if we're not talking, if we're just.
Yeah.
So if we go to the workshop next week, if you're, if you're, if you're there?
Just let me know and we'll, we'll publish that, you know, members of the planning commission can read it and it's for this.
I, I wish I would have known that. I would have really liked to have heard at the dial, they had obviously some discussion on it.
Well, and I was out of town for that. I think it was on, it may have been April 11th.
Okay.
So I'll find out.
Meetings are online, right? Yeah, watch them.
You can watch our meetings on the YouTube channel.
Did we have anything else we want to discuss?
I, I have one question and maybe we could just table it because I don't know if we'll be able to get through it. But I would be interested in, so I'm a little confused on the setup of the, the Third Avenue plan. So the town owns a lot of the property, right? And we're redeveloping it for the benefit of. The, I guess, future businesses, right, or the existing businesses? So I, I just kind of be interested at some point in learning more about how that works. I'm excited about, and think that's going to be awesome. I've always thought that little kind of nook of downtown could really be cool, blockable, you know, not on the fountain. Just kind of interested in how that would work and like kind of what the timeline is.
And all I know is that there was, I believe it was the university students did like a concept.
Yeah.
Of it. And I believe it is, it needs to be budgeted or we have funding set aside to do something this year.
Yeah.
That's all I know. But I will follow up with you regarding, I'll send you, um, an email on. Here's where I look for the metro district, and I believe it was April 11th. Um, and that was just the policy on this is how we're going to deal with metro districts. Um, then the tax percentage breakdown for Bertha and the Third Avenue plan, what's going to happen there.
Awesome. I have a question on something you said. I just wanted, um, so these, the, the folks that are applying for the open position. Then, then you said we're going to wait till, we're going to do something in August. Are those two things related or not?
No.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, so we have a vacancy now. We want to fill the vacancy. And then there will be an election of officers. We had an election last time just to replace, um, the chair position. And then, and then because of that position was replaced. Then we needed to replace the vice chair position and then that was replaced. And then we needed to replace the secretary position. Yeah, it was, it was a series, yeah, dominoes, exactly. And so in August, then that's when the official election time is reportedly. I can't find it in writing.
I think if we agree that that's when, I guess we just do it.
Yeah.
And this could be me just not having been here that long. But, um, this last week, last weekend, um, Loveland had a car show. And they've got that little center area now and they had a live band and it was just hopping. The place was just alive. It had an incredible vibe, just the, the community getting involved and everybody coming together. And I was just like, this is real, this is so cool. And just loving, do, does Bertha do something?
Going to be like a bunch of tractors.
What is it?
All right, that's great. And this stuff's so important and it just, uh, if, you know, the businesses are all involved, all the restaurants, it just happens.
It's a chamber.
Food trucks, right?
Cool.
Trust me. It's mostly volunteer, I used to, it's mostly by volunteers, so it's really hard. Hence, the town has to step in and help along. But it's a non, I mean, it's essentially run by volunteers. But down, Loveland has a specific downtown authority that has money.
And Bertha is looking into having a deep, a downtown development authority as well, but we, we're just not having yet.
Interesting.
That's exciting.
That would be great.
And then I feel like the, uh, the Lions Club does actually do a car show. Over by the, uh, Ace.
I'm at the Corvette Club, Top of the Rockies, and, um, we did a huge thing.
So I think there are four clubs. Three hundred cars there and it was, it was incredible.
Well, in two weeks, we'll have a farmer's morgue on Thursday nights.
All right.
We gotta change our meeting times.
I don't know if the gates have decided, probably has. There's also an Oktoberfest, which is.
Super session meeting, so.
Yeah.
Right, I know you're getting short on, uh, sugar spring.
This is an issue that we probably should talk about. Our meetings all start at six. Is that still, is for everyone? Because I know some people might have been driving somewhere else. Is that still a good time for everyone?
Yeah, I didn't think about the farmers.
Yeah, we're gonna miss the farmer's morgue. I'll have to go and write it for.
We'll get the good stuff out there.
That's right, that's right.
All right.
Yes, yes, I, I, I think we, yeah, actually, rubbish rule says that you can have someone make a motion to adjourn. But it doesn't have to be seconded and it doesn't need to be voted on.
Make a motion to adjourn.
We're adjourned.
Thanks, all.
Thank you. I feel like there's one of those.
It's great. Okay, thanks.
Oh, you know, cheer for saying.